We'll call the meeting to order. Today's the preliminary matter, this is Woody Knight, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Today is October 16th, 2024. Let me confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Pete Pickles?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
Hi, Mary. Scott Kenter? I don't see Scott, but he may be joining us soon. And then Steve Managing Associate Member?
Yes.
Hi, Steve. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kristen Grubbs, Planning Director?
Yes.
All right, anticipated speakers, presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Damon Jesperson from Whiffle Tree Works?
Here.
Hey, Damon. TJ Melvin from Melvin for Millennium Engineering?
Here.
Hi TJ. All right. Good evening. This is October 16th, 2024, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with chapter two of the Acts of 2023. Oh, I forgot to mention Larry Murphy won't be with us tonight. He'll be, he will use the Mullen Rule to watch a video and will participate in the next meeting. Sorry about that. Let's start over again. So October 16th, 2024, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with the chapter two of the Acts of 2023. For extends the governance March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting on until March 31st, 2024. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is meeting by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. You may join by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 83271413056 with passcode 10879 or by calling 1-929-2056099US and entering the meeting ID number and passcode with motion. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine. The newer channel. On Zoom and at www.tncTV.org and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting business ground rules. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permission to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I'll go down to list the board, the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any common questions or questions. For all attendees except for board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer or your phone when you are not speaking. There'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearing. After board members have spoken, I will award the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. Video comments participants, to raise your hand hover over the bottom of Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. Telephone participants, to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your telephone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make comments. I'll for the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raise hand column. And again, for the participant applicant representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submitted questions or concerns that they will be noted for the record? And again, participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. That being done and said, first item on our agenda this evening is liaison reports. The first liaison report is CBA, that is Larry, he's not in attendance. The next CBA meeting is on 11/17. So we will hear a report from Larry then. Conservation Commission, that would be me. Conservation meant last night. They, it was a three hour meeting, almost three hours, a lot on the agenda. The only things obtained to us were 68 Green Street. They had a sidewalk on 68 Green Street a couple Saturdays ago. They had a concern on Lot One with the grading, some rip rap or spillway there, so that needs to be addressed. And on Lot Two, it was an unvegetated area in the backyard. In remnants of a farm road that could be cleaned up and suggestions were made to clean that up with something other than heavy equipment. And they'd like, Conservation Commission would like the erosion control removed. They gave a partial they gave a partial order compliance on Lot Two and Lot One, they need to resolve that issue with the retention plan. The spillway come on the retention. Another thing on the agenda, Sunset Club, they basically they dropped the order to suspension of work and there's some discussion on the merch trailer being unblocked. The few other things on the plan and they are basically in the near future anticipating and I know I and it was one of the things that pertained us. Oh, three Newbury Port Turnpike, they allow, they've reviewed and allowed the modifications made to the plant and they are drafting a new decision for them and they voted to allow the modifications in the Conservation Commission's eyes. So those are the only three things I can recall that pertained us in the conservation last night. MVPD? Did someone say something?
I said, thanks, Woody.
Oh, okay. Yep. No problem, Mary. Kristen, the next thing on liaison and meeting reports is MVPC.
Yeah, we have not met since the last planned work meeting. The MVPC planners' meeting is a week from tomorrow.
Okay, great. We'll get a report on that on the next meeting. Next thing on the agenda, meeting minutes. I I hope everybody's received the I hope everybody's received the meeting minutes for September 18th, 2024. Has everyone on the board had a chance to review the meeting minutes for September 18th?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any edits or modifications to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to accept the, approve the meeting minutes for September 18th, my fourth.
I'll make your motion, Woody.
Hi Scott, thanks for joining us. Yep. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, roll call vote. Pete?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
And I, I will say yes as well. Okay, the next set of minutes we have those distributed to the board were for October 2nd, 2024. Has everybody had a chance to review those? Take that as a yes. Are there any edits or modifications to those minutes? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes for October 2nd, 2024.
I moved to the minutes.
Okay, great. Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. Roll call vote. Pete?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I forgot Steve in the last minute. Steve, how do you feel?
No problem.
And I say yes as well, so meeting approved. All right, I had a glitch here. I'm back. Sorry about that. Hopefully that doesn't happen again. All right, so now that we're done with meeting minutes, we'll go to the next thing on the agenda. Now, what time is it? It's 7:14, so we'll get another minute here and we can get into our first public hearing. Public hearing tonight is a continuance of the September 18th, 2024 meeting, public hearing for Whiffle Tree Works, Level Two Site Plan Review for Nonprofit Educational Organization, Use of the Barn at One Marsh Meadow in Byfield. As a background for the Planning Board's public hearing tonight, the building commissioner has reviewed the information from the applicant. Applicant is operating a nonprofit educational enterprise, which is a use allowed by right according to Mass. General Law 40A Section 3. Site plan review is the required method of review. The board will be using the town's running bylaw, Chapter 97, Article 9, special regulations to guide this review process. The purpose of the regulation is to protect the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the public by providing for a comprehensive review procedure of plans for uses and structures which may have impacts on traffic, parking, services and utilities, environmental quality, water resources, drainage and community care. So the board went on a site visit here to bond on the property on Friday, September 27th, 2024. So that being said, hi Damon, do you have any new information that you'd like to share with the board?
Excuse me, Woody?
Yes?
I will be recusing myself from this discussion as I am the director of our.
Okay, thank you, Pete.
I believe there are some things that have been submitted to the town and I had done, if I may, I've done a little reflecting and I'd like to read some of my thoughts and reflections.
Go right ahead.
Okay. In reflecting on some of the comments from the first public hearing, I've given a lot of thought to the concerns raised. I realize that some of the reactions may come from genuine worry and I want to acknowledge that change can feel unsettling, especially when it impacts the spaces we call home. While some of the comments initially surprised me, I'm committed to having conversations with anyone or any group who has concerns. Since my conversation with Zach, I haven't received further outreach, but I remain open to speaking with anyone who would like to share their thoughts. I understand when it comes to neighborhood projects like this, concerns about safety, particularly around children, are completely valid. However, I believe it is important to look at the specific risks within a reasonable context. For example, the concern of a child abduction during a public event on our property is one I take seriously. But when we look at the situation and actual risk, it is minimal. Our events will be held in broad daylight and the idea of someone crossing a large open field unnoticed to abduct a child seems highly unlikely, especially compared to the regular deliveries from UPS, Amazon and FedEx that already bring strangers to our front doors. This doesn't minimize the fear, but I think it is worth considering how we can balance these feelings with the realistic understandings of risk. Similarly, concerns about headlights are understandable, but I believe this is an issue we can mitigate. With only a small number of cars parking behind the barn during events and the events being held during daylight, this disruption from headlights would be minimal and occasional. If it remains a concern, we can explore the idea of planting screening trees or installing lights to reduce the contrast and minimize any impact. The goal of our plan has always been to create as little disruption as possible while still allowing the barn to serve both private and public needs. As for noise, I've heard concerns about potential disturbances, but I believe we can all agree that some level of noise is part of living in a community. Many homes near Austin Lane already hear noise from the nearby hunting reservation and shooting ranges. And yet we all coexist. While a few events at the barn might create some noise, it is unlikely to be more disruptive than a neighborhood's neighbor's backyard party or the marching band at the high school. Additionally, given the distance between the home and the barn, sound will dissipate significantly before it reaches a neighbor's property. It is important to remember that being part of a community means sharing in both the quiet moments and the lively ones. Lastly, I'd like to emphasize the positive impacts projects like this can have on our community. I've seen firsthand how towns without central gathering spaces can struggle to provide meaningful activity for residents, especially for the youth. In one community, I witnessed how the lack of spaces for engagement led some young people down a very destructive path. By creating places where people of all ages can gather, find purpose and connect, we strengthen our community. Newbury doesn't have a community center and spaces like the Byfield Art Center, Theater in the Open, the town's new basketball courts offer essential places for people to come together. In today's digital world, having physical spaces where we can interact face to face is invaluable. I believe this project has the potential to benefit everyone and I'm hopeful that we can continue this dialogue with openness and understanding.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Damon. All right, Kristen. Do we have any departmental, departmental reviews? At this time, anything from Joe or otherwise?
So I, I checked in with the police and fire department directors and they have not had additional follow-up, so their comment letters are still posted on the website for consideration. I also circled back with the health director and building inspector who confirmed that the proposed uses are sufficient to the property. There's no regulatory requirements for additional utilities such as permanent bathrooms for the kinds of use that are being proposed. That would be different if there were, if it was like an eight-hour day camp or a restaurant with food. There, there are differences that would trigger different regulations, but the proposal that we have before us does not have any additional requirements from Board of Health or building code enforcement. And then one other, well, two updates. I connected with the Jan Forster who provides administrative support with the Historical Commission just to ask that if they had additional comments related to the building restriction on the property that they wanted to share with the planning board. Just, I'd be happy to pass those along. I don't have any additional comments from them. And then finally, as requested by the board at the last meeting, the site plans were transmitted to the town's peer review engineer who routinely works on behalf of the planning board to review drainage, grading, any engineering impacts. So those comments, the site plans and an engineering letter from Hayes Engineering were transmitted to Joe Sorwaka and he provided comments back to the board, which can be discussed by the planning board or if there's any follow-up questions, we can, we can talk about that a little. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Scott, Mary, oh, Steve. I don't believe I'm missing anyone. Do you have any questions for Damon?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have any questions, Woody.
Okay. And Steve, any questions? You're muted, Steve.
Muted, Steve.
How about that? Am I back on?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Sorry for the mix-up. I did read the comments that we received from the public and were posted on the town website. And it seemed to me that there is indeed a lot of public support being expressed for the project. But when I looked at the, some of the local comments, I was noting again the concerns of the nearer butters about light factors and perhaps sound effects as well as an acknowledgement of the positive impact that the project could bring. But I thought that some of the concerns were expressly thinking about larger events, particularly if they began to be done at night. And I was wondering if Damon has any comments about plans as submitted on your proposal that would allow for events that could be both larger than an art workshop and could be at night as well, what your thinking is on that? Thank you.
I'm currently not thinking of any activities that we would either carry on at night or be larger. You know, as I have said multiple times, I'm not going to promise nothing like that will ever happen, but if we were to do a sort of a one-off evening event, we would have to provide lighting and safe parking and things like that as you, I don't know if you went down Marsh Meadow Lane all the way, but there is no street lighting because it's not a public street, so there would be considerable work that needs to be done to provide for that sort of activity and it's not where our interest is right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Damon. Thank you, Steve. Kristen, do we have, have there been any public comments submitted in writing?
Yes, quite a few and I've been really making an effort to get those posted as soon as possible. I just want to thank everyone who's written in. I have identified the address and the date the comment was received and I know there was some concern expressed about comments that were not from Newbury residents, so I just want to say I did identify that. So I know during previous projects like this that have garnered public report, public comment, there's just been a reading through of the names and comments and then asking if there are any additional, you know, if any of the authors of the comments are, are present and would like to add to the comment, that's certainly welcome. So Woody, would that be helpful to just kind of read through them for the record?
Yes, please read them into the wreckage if you would, Kristen.
All right. So since the last meeting, there, these were the comments. Gallagher, 59 High Road on October 2nd. Chris Villa, my apologies if that's not stated quite accurately, that's an Amesbury resident, comment received October 8th. Ryan Kelly, comment received, a resident of 24 School Street, comment received October 8th. Snow, public comment from a Newbury Port resident, received October 10th. Fariah, public comment, Exeter, New Hampshire resident, October 9th. De Martino, public comment from a Newbury resident at One Sandy Way on October 9th. Gehagan, public comment, 9 Plummer's Lane, Newbury resident, October 10th. Bud Kelly, public comment, 24 School Street, October 11th. Erickson, public comment, 48 Northern Boulevard. He submitted two comments, one on October 11th and another today on the 16th. Brown, public comment, Barrington, New Hampshire resident. Stillman, public comment, Hershey, Pennsylvania resident, I think maybe a former Newbury resident, I don't remember. Lynn, public comment, 17 Church Street, Newbury resident, October 14th. Harrison, public comment, Newbury Port resident, October 15th. Collins, public comment, 15 Austin Lane, October 15th. Rice, public comment, 7R Austin Lane, October 15th. Harrison. Alexa Harrison, different Harrison. Newbury Port resident, public comment on the 15th. Danner, public comment, Newbury resident, 163 Elm Street, October 16th. Bearman, public comment, Lexington resident, October 16th. Sant, public comment, 170 Elm Street resident, October 16th. And Harrison, public comment, Newbury Port resident on October 16th. There, if, if anything came in in the last couple hours, I do not have them posted yet, but I will post any of that comment. But I will post any of that comment.
Okay, I'll ask the board, uh you've all had the opportunity to read these public comments. Scott, Mary? Steve, yep?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, that being said. The, the rain member of the public that wish a comment at this time, please raise your hand. We'll take the public comment as they're listed. And I just want to say, uh, please limit comments to topics that have not already been addressed. We have any raised hands? Kristen, do you see any raised hands?
I do not yet. Oh, yes, I do. Um Helen Martocchio's first one on the list. Hi Helen.
Yep, Helen, could you please state your name and address for the record? And you are muted at this moment. So if you want to unmute yourself.
My name is Helen Martocchio, twenty four Orchard Street in Byfield. Um I'm just, um I wanted to say that I had attended this um, the site visit. And I mean, I just had some general questions. I'm obviously not um a layperson. I don't necessarily understand um what's involved in some of the decisions. But you know, and some of the things that I remember um from that day is um the parking located behind the barn. And, and then also um that there was going to be a wall that needed to be moved. That the stone structure needed to be moved to be able to accommodate and make more room for parking. Or just so in case of snow and this, they had um, snow that needed to be pushed against that that um, that that would be adjusted. I just didn't know if that was, there's any feedback on that. So that was um. And then also, I don't remember if it was mentioned that day, the size of vehicles suited for parking in, in that particular location behind the barn. Since it's, it's kind of tight and there were, I forget, like maybe ten spots that may have been allocated. I don't remember the exact number. So also additional parking, it had been dis, it had been identified that there would be parallel parking along Marsh Meadow. If there was overflow from the um, of the spaces already um identified. And then I wasn't sure from looking at the, the plant that were, if they were marked or not. But also was it assumed that would just be parallel parking or would there also be um diagonal nose in parking? Um on that, on that bank of land um there. And then just in terms of if you do have additional parking along Marsh Meadow, I mean, how does that affect pedestrians maneuvering the road and other inbound outbound traffic? It seems like it um, it just gets, it seems a little tight there. Want to keep going, there are a lot of observations, there's a couple more observations. The other was um, location, you know, again, um I asked about, you know, the, or I didn't ask actually. I was asked, I was told I couldn't ask any questions that day. Um so anyway, because I was not on the board and just in a butter who was attending. But like, for instance, you have an event that requires um the portable bathrooms and sanitation stations. So that, you know, we so said that day that it would be, you know, walking out from the barn, it would be on the right hand side in the corner. So, and that would, you know, be accommodated out the ramp. So anyone um with, with physical challenges would have access to it. But also wondered why that's not on the plan, how is that identified? And was that taken into consideration with um emergency vehicles or you just need to, you know, go around the buil, the, the building? And then um. And then also the other question is, I know we're saying that they're not necessarily thinking of large scale events at this point. But because you're not taking anything off the table, you have to ask the question. So if you have a larger event and you're required to create, have more sanitation stations for a number of people, then where are they going? Then allowed person capacity, um it said that the barn, the capacity is ninety nine people. Well, what is the criteria for that? Is that when there's nothing in the barn? Or is it ninety nine people when you have the different stalls that are populated with, you know, with the artists, their product, et cetera? Um so that was just in, you know, how is that being, how would that be managed and monitored? Well, calculated and monitored. So that's, I mean, those are the questions I had from that day. I can let you answer, you know, I can let you respond to that. I mean, I can continue on, but I'll, you know, I've settled, you know, I was, I had a few questions in there that made their answers to.
Oh, sorry, Woody.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Helen. Uh Damon, if you'd like to go through, I saw you taking notes. Like to go through and if you miss anything, I'll give Helen a chance to remind you of some of the things she said.
Yes, so uh the first thing I believe you asked about was snow removal and the stonewall behind the barn. Uh because we have no heat in the structure right now, we're not planning to do any events while it is cold. So. Again, this would be. Yet stonewall would have to move if we are doing events or activities during the winter. Since we have no heat, we're not planning to do any events currently during the winter. So that change would be contingent upon uh some very considerable changes in the future. Insulation, heating. And as you no doubt saw, it's a very large open space. It would be a considerable investment to make those sorts of changes, so it is not in the immediate plans or future. There are six spots behind the uh barn for parking. It is nose in parking and, or I guess you could back in, either way. But we had the uh police SUV parked there and then drove around. The building to ensure that you could park a large vehicle there and still maintain the access. Completely around the building without any uh issues. As far as parking along Marsh Meadow Lane, which is a fee interest of the Jespersons, we own both sides of that property. It is entirely a private road. The plan shows parallel parking. Uh it may be easier and simpler to do nose in parking. Um but we wouldn't, as we have demonstrated it in the past. During horse shows and other events. Parking along the road has not inhibited our ability to get both safety vehicles in and out, as well as trailers, trucks and the like. Wear bathrooms would go if we do end up doing a large event. Uh that requires more than a single stall occupancy bathroom. We have had the portable trailer bathrooms on the property in the past. And we've put them essentially across from the opening, which would be to the southeast of the ramp. Basically directly across from where the proposed handicap parking would go. And the number of people who are allowed in the building was set by the building inspector. Uh that is the occupancy and the. I don't know if you were concerned about the structural integrity of the building and that's why you were asking, but.
The question really had to do with, you know, you have a um capacity limit, a safety limit for the building. And so in the event that depending on the type of activity that you have going on in the barn. Is ninety nine a real, when, when is ninety nine not a real number? So is, when does that have to be adjusted down based on the use of the space within the, within the, the barn? So for instance, if you have all the stalls occupied, you have, you know, you have a fair and you have artists in those stalls. And they have their works there for people to view and purchase or, you know, just for view, whatever the case is. You still have room for ninety, is that still ninety nine people? That you can still have come into, you know, is because into the barn at that point, because you've taken up the floor space with, with product.
It is, that's a question that I would have to ask the building inspector, but my understanding is. That if it's a non-permanent. Change, it doesn't change the occupancy. We, you know, if it's too crowded to go in. Then, then people just can, simply couldn't go in. But we, when we held the craft fair in the past, we just counted people going in and out and managed the flow that way.
I mean, again, it was an observation because like to me um. You know, it, it, the space expands, contracts. And, and the thing is, is that I do think when you have objects occupying floor space, that that takes away number of people allowed in the structure. I mean, I'm not saying it can't be controlled, but it was just a general question because ninety nine people, is that like when the barn's empty? That's then, that's not. You know what I mean, it's not realistic for.
Yes, I, I understand what you're asking and I, I would have to check with the building inspector. We would never want to try and stuff people into the building because that's not good if, for. The building is not good for the people, it's not good for the artists, so, but I don't know if there are rules around that. I, I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I mean, I just said in terms of looking around. So that was, those are my comments from my visit there. Thank you. Um I guess I would like to say, since I still have the floor, since no one's muted me yet, um. I, you know, I, I have to say, I support the arts. I mean, I know, I mean, I know that you're taking a lot of these comments as ne, as being negative and being, um but I just feel as though it's necessary to ask. Because once um, you know, everything's approved. I mean, it's, I'm not really sure what the process is to be able to have, provide any feedback for activities that are there. Um I know that, you know, comments have been made about, you know, noise. Well, I, I think that's, you know, is it fair, comment from um a butters. Uh I mean, because, I mean, I know you had, there was one event that was on site, it was in the evening, it doesn't matter if it's evening or day. My, but my house shouldn't shake from the sound of music. I live far enough away from you that that's pretty damn loud if my house is vibrating. So that's, so I think that no matter whether, you know, when you have that type of event, again, I will, I enjoy music. Whether I would have enjoyed that music in the barn, doesn't matter, it's just more, I don't have to feel it in my home. And that's the same as other um, the butters had commented. And that also too is kind of true that, I mean, it's, I noticed, I did read a lot of the comments from um the neighbors. And I would have to, you know, breathe somewhat in, feeling isn't genuine and not taking neighbors seriously in terms of like some of the comments. Online, it's just that, you know, concern about, you know, you know, child safety. Well, you know, that parent, that's, that's their feeling, that's their reality. It's maybe, you know, it's, it's, so you have to, I mean, take that seriously. So you just have to, you know, just be um. Understanding of that. And I don't know that, you know, and there was a lot of comments about, you know, people in, in some of the letters that people um and. Who are supporting the project, is that what people are afraid of change? I'm not sure that that's really um the issue, it's more so, I mean, even for me, I just want to know the change is managed. And maybe, you know, I, I, maybe because of part of what I do for work. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions in terms of the proposal. There's a lot, I think it's a, it's a wide swath in terms of like what you have that you're interested in doing. And it's hard for me, like again, to fathom. You know, how, you know, how are you, how are any stipulations or rules being set if it's open? And I mean, I, I mean, for instance, you know, if I, if I work on a project where I'm, where I work, where I'm employed. I can't get, I can't get by doing it that way. So that's why for me, you know, I ask all those questions because I could never, I could never get something approved with. Not having more details and more specifics for a project, that's all. Maybe, thank you, that's, that's my, what I had to say.
Okay, thank you, Helen, and thank you for your comments and questions. And uh Damon, if you don't have any other replies, I'll move on to the next raised hand. Okay, I saw you not had, yes, so next raised hand that I see is Marshall. Marshall, would you like to state your name and address for the record and your questions and comments can proceed? You, you're muted at this moment, but Marshall.
A common problem. So I'm Marshall Jespersen, I'm at one sixty nine Elm Street. Um very familiar with the property because I was the one who initiated the building of the barn. At the behest of the town to uh preserve a, a historic building. So we're, we're trying to do some good and responsible things in this space. Uh I do know that, that people had uh talked about some of the things that it could come about. We have been sensitive to those things and the fact that we are pretty far from everyone. With a noise issue and I, I understand that Helen's house was shaking with noise. That's a, that's a pretty big noise. I, I don't know when that happened. But uh we did do some sound measurements as to if it was really loud in the barn. How would it be uh fifty, sixty yards away? And it was. Not significantly over the background sounds that, that exist there all the time. Uh we did run some data by that, but, but to be sure, we are sensitive to that as well. And so uh we're certainly not aiming to um. Be a nuisance for the neighbors or, or anyone. But I think we have a uh, a reasonable plan that would be reasonably counted out. And when we did look at the barn and had ninety nine people as the occupancy uh limit. And when we had the art show, we kept it at ninety nine or fewer people in the barn. But that gives every person uh twenty square feet, that's a four foot by five foot patch. It's a pretty big space, so um. While we had ninety nine people in there at any time, it really wasn't very crowded. And so it was uh, it was quite comfortable. So I just wanted to make those couple of observations and uh I'll turn it back to you, Woody.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Marshall. Do we have any other raised hands that you can see, Kristen, from the public?
No, I don't, I'm not seeing one.
Okay. Oh, go back to the board members real quick. Does anyone else, uh Scott, Mary? Steve, does anyone else have any questions?
No, no, Woody, I don't.
Thank you, thank you, Scott. And Steve stepped out, but he spoke earlier, hopefully he doesn't have anything else. Okay. Would the, uh, would the board like to go through the site plan review criteria? Would you like to start that process, Mary and Scott?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you put that up on the screen? Do you have that to put up on the screen so everyone can follow along, Kristen?
Yep, I can grab it. You can see that?
Yep.
Yes. Okay.
So the first, just, this is part of the zoning by law um section nine. Um and the first part just pertains to what the triggers are for this process. Which, as you all remember, the more than six construction expansion or alteration of a parking area. Resulting in six or more new spaces was the trigger. We're in the middle of the process and this is, you can see the section six, this decision criteria.
Yep. So I guess I'll ask. So, I guess I left the board members on credit on on six, the criteria, decision criteria. Number one, the volume of cut and fill. Does, I'll just read the whole thing here. The planning board shall approve an application for a site plan review if it finds that the applicant has submitted sufficient information from which it can determine that the pro- the the project will minimize. The volume of cut and fill. How does everyone feel on that? This, it would be a proposed parking spaces. I would say the, that's, that's minimized. Um, the number of removed trees, six inch caliber or larger. There's nothing proposed of that sort of year. Um, area of wetland vegetation displaced. There, that is not an issue with this prod, with this parking plan. Um, soil erosion, the peer reviews weighed in. And I don't think that's an issue with this here. Um, the threat of air and water pollution. I don't see a threat. If anyone has sees one, please speak up. And number six, traffic congestion. So with the traffic congestion, unless unless someone has a problem, please speak up. But um, we've addressed that with the parking plan. Um, Mary, you agree? So, did you say something?
No, I just um, blew my throat.
Oh, okay, yep. All right. So um, now, do we go on from there? Kristen, with the B, C, D?
Yeah, yeah, I would just add about the traffic congestion. I mean, I think that, you know, that gets at the comments that um, police have made, that in their review and there certainly um, will be discussion of, you know, assuring that there is uh appropriate parking monitors and traffic monitors in the case of large events. So there can be some condition that reflects the need to take the traffic issues seriously and assure that there will not be any um, impact. There will be no parking on Orchard Street. Um, the parking will be as proposed in the site plan.
Kristen, uh, this is Steve with a question. When we talk about traffic congestion, uh, that there'll be close monitoring on Marsh Lane itself. But I'm wondering whether the egress onto Orchard Street is something that falls under the purview of the planning board. And one should never ask a question unless one knows the answer, but, but I don't know the answer, so I'm just putting it out there.
Well, I think that's why, I mean, why the board got review from police in order to assure that that you, you know, there's a stop sign, there's a use that of that road access currently for the horse event. So I do believe that's been reviewed. Um, but happy to have a discussion if there are questions.
Okay, well, thank you. Marshall, do you have your hand raised or was that from previous?
Uh, I had raised my hand because I just wanted to comment, but I think Kristen had done a, a fine job. There'd been running horse shows there for now over forty years. Um, and we've have, of course, with horse, horse shows, trucks and large trailers uh going in and out of there. And it uh has, has been successful, has not been a significant problem in the past. So I just wanted to reiterate, but I think, I think Kristen covered that very well.
And just a reminder that when, when the initial subdivision was approved and Marsh Meadow was, you know, permitted as part of the subdivision, as a private road, part of the subdivision, that all that would have been reviewed at that point in time in terms of, you know, site distances on Orchard Street and that, that kind of thing. There are no changes to that.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I'll continue on. Avoid removal of existing stone walls or where removal is required, minimize length of removal. Uh, just like, once again, please speak up if you have something to say on any of these A, uh, B through M. Provide adequate stormwater management and other utilities consistent with the requirements of Newbury Stormwater Bylaw and the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations. Maximize safety for pedestrians and vehicles both on the site and entering onto and egressing from it. We just addressed some of that. Provide adequate access to each structure for fire and emergency service equipment. Peer reviews weighed in on that. Minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, or other service areas viewed from public ways or premises residentially used or zoned. Minimize intrusion of glare from headlights and sight lighting on surrounding properties. Minimize unreasonable departure from the character of materials and scale of buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. Prevent contamination of groundwater from any source. Okay, enhance the appearance of the properties, the, of the property to the greatest degree possible by means of landscaping and other site amenities. Minimize, uh, L, minimize impacts of the use of adjacent properties through regulation of hours of operation, deliveries, noise, rubbish, rubbish removal, and onsite storage. Ensure compliance with the provisions of Newbury zoning by law, including parking and signs. So that gets us there. Um, and we go on to seven, correct, Kristen?
Yeah, I just, um, one comment that I haven't thought of before, but um there as identified by this letter M, there is a section of the bylaw that addresses signs. So I don't know, Damon, I haven't heard you talk about any with Filtry Works signage, but if you were to want to establish some kind of sign, it would just need to be looked at to end be in compliance with this additional section of the bylaw. Just a comment on that.
So would that be a special hearing or would that just be coming before the planning board with a proposed sign, its location, size, and making sure it was in compliance?
Yeah, I'm not actually, um, I'm not looking at the bylaw right now, so I don't wanna misspeak. I'm not sure who the permitting authority is with that, if it's just an approval through the building inspector or if the select board might be involved. I, I think it might depend, but I'm not familiar with that, so I know, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, I'm looping back a little bit and I apologize for that, but I stepped away at just the wrong time. Um when Marshall was talking about some of the studies he had done about uh sound, which of course is one of the issues that Helen raised. And I'm wondering whether you know, there's a report or something to substantiate the findings. Should that become an issue for the abutters to try and gain, gain greater comfort with what the sound issues may be in the property? And again, if Marshall's left the uh scene or I apologize, but maybe Damon knows something about that as well, if there was a study done. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So you're just asking Steve what study has been done or what we looked at, or I'm, I'm not entirely following your question, sorry.
Sure, a little bit of both. I believe Marshall talked about how some assessment was done of noise levels of measuring decibels perhaps, or something inside the barn or in the surrounding area and how far it would uh transmit. So I thought that perhaps there was a uh
There, there was.
Something.
Yep, um. Thank you for the, the question. Um, and Steve, what we did was take a noise source in the barn and a measuring device and measured the sound level in the barn up to um, just a hundred decibels, which is really loud. It's below painful, but we didn't wanna get up too painful. And then we went out and measured uh ambient noise on a day with a light breeze, no traffic, uh, not a lot of other noise. And the ambient noise level of background noise was about fifty decibels um, out at the border of the property. Uh, in the barn, it was hundred decibels. When we had no music in the barn, just background noise in the barn, it was thirty five decibels. Um, then we went uh just outside of the barn with a hundred decibels inside. We were uh at ten meters. Uh, we were at sixty five decibels at twenty meters, sixty at thirty meters, fifty one decibels, which was very close to the background uh of, of that particular day. And what that indicated was that the noise that you could hear, and you could discern the noise, you could hear what the noise was, but it was no louder than any other thing that you would hear at the time, whether it was rustling of the leaves or birds or anything else. And so it was the same magnitude as the background noise. Even though, you know, ears are very sensitive. And so you could hear things, both in the background noise and from the barn. But what we were concerned with was what was the, the basically the energy level, decibels of that noise. And when we got out to thirty meters, it was about the background noise with a large noise inside. It's not an exhaustive study, but it gave us an indication that um how fast the, the, the noise would drop off with distance from the barn. Now, that was at thirty meters and our abutters are, uh, except for the Laffy's house, which is right next to the barn. Uh, our abutters are all one hundred meters or more away from the barn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Thank you, Steve. Um, Scott, you have your hand raised. Would you like to ask a question or say something?
Um, yes, Woody. Um, and Marshall, I appreciate um you know, the um, the effort, um, and certainly the sensitivity to the comments, um, you know, on the, on the noise. I guess my question, um, with respect to the noise and the testing, um did, like, who performed the testing? Was the testing performed by a licensed sound engineer? Um, did you and your family perform the testing? Um, you know, was it testing that was, again, if it was by a licensed sound engineer, it was certified. Uh, and we'd have that, um, you know, um, you know, you could put that in the record. Um, again, um, if you could provide some color on that, it'd be appreciated.
I'd, I'd be happy to. Um, thank you, Scott. And it, it was testing that I did. It was not a, a sound engineer because we were looking for the magnitude of the sound and how, how it dropped off. And so it was a let's do a first look at what this might look like with very loud sounds in the barn and, and how far we would go out. Uh, were we to do something with uh a sound engineer or an engineer? Um, we could do those calculations. They're, they're pretty straightforward. Uh but because of the fact that Newbury doesn't have a sound uh or noise standard, it makes it kind of difficult. So we, I just went with the standard of what is the background noise? What is the background sound level? And where do we reach that sound level with a pretty loud noise in the barn? Could always do more, could always put more sound in the barn and, and, and do it at different levels, but uh, that was the measure that, uh, that I did, Scott.
And uh, that was at a, Marshall, that was at a hundred decibels in the barn and a hundred decibel is is pretty loud. It's uh more than what OSHA wants for things like leaf blowers and so forth without ear protection. So that's just the fact that I happen to know, but a hundred decibels is a pretty loud noise. Um, all right, if we don't have any other further questions or comments from board members or otherwise, I'm, I'll go on to number seven. Um, conditions of approval. A, site plan approval may be subject to conditions, modifications, and restrictions as the planning board may deem necessary in order to satisfy any of the de- decision criteria listed above. Any construction, reconstruction, altercation, or addition shall be carried on only in conformity with such conditions, modifications, or restrictions, and in conformity with the application and site plan. B, any order of, of conditions from the Conservation Commission, which imposes conditions inconsistent with site plan approval shall be required shall require a revision of the site plan. A request for such revision must be submitted in writing to the planning board. C, for any construction project or a change in use that requires site plan review, no building permit may be issued unless or, and until the applicant has complied with the provisions relating to site plan review under this article and the conditions, modifications, and restrictions contained within the decision of the site plan review are referenced to and incorporated and, and made an express condition of such building permit. The planning board reserves the right for itself and its agents to can, to enter the site at any time without notice for the duration of the site plan approval to determine compliance there with it. E, site plan approval by the planning board shall not be constructed as approval from any other board official or department. F, at the discretion of the building inspector with the concurrence of the planning board recording of the certification of the town clerk, and the decision of site plan review at the registry of deeds may be included as an additional condition precedent to the issuance of a building permit. All right, and then uh, we, we do eight, nine, correct, Kristen? Um, lapse, site plan approval for a project shall last after two years from the date of issuance unless any construction work contemplated, thereby shall have commenced and proceeded in good faith continuously to completion, except for good cause. This two-year period shall not include time required to persuade or await determination of an appeal filed pursuant. General law, C forty eight, eight and seventeen. Appeals to to permit granted authority. Site plan approval made for good cause. In the sole opinion of the planning board, be extended in writing by the board. Upon written request of the applicant. And then finally. Oh, finally nine. Modifications to approve site plans. A request to modify. To request a modification to approve site plan. An applicant shall submit. To the planning board a written description of the proposed modifications. Modified site plans will, in 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 most instances. Be subject to the same submittal review and hearing procedures. As was the original filing. In the case. In the case of a level two approved site plan. If the board determines that a particular modification is not significant. And is consistent with the previously approved site plan. The board may deem an additional public hearing unnecessary.
Just I, just a comment is that. Much of this language. Are generally with a site plan review that the board is considering. There's actual construction going on, so just like that lapse language refers to if. The applicant does not proceed with a construction that they have proposed within a two-year period, then. The approval pin laps. In this case, there wouldn't. There's no construction being contemplated, so if some of this language is not relevant.
I see a raised hand. Leslie Matthews, would you? Do you have a comment? Or.
Yes, I actually have a comment about the sound. I hate to go backwards on this, but.
Okay, could you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Leslie Matthews, one eleven Main Street. And as far as the sound, Marshall's pretty on target as far as like a standardized. Sound. It all depends on location and depends on how the neighbors feel about it. And I was actually sent down to the Sunset Club and had to do a decimal reading down there. From all points of view. All sounds, all area and down there, along with the owner of the. The establishment itself. And then it was a determination that was made on how. How much time, how late, and how loud the music could actually be. So there's there isn't an actual standard. It's it's a per business determination. And that's, just wanted to add that little info for you.
Okay, thanks so much.
The report that Marshall, the report that you did is, is that like. In the in the plans for a public knowledge to to suit what you came up as far as decibels were concerned?
No, I didn't. Did not submit a report. I'd be happy to do it.
Terrific. That'd be great. Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right.
Excellent, see.
So now that we've gone through the criteria. Unless this, Leslie's hand's still up. I believe she's done. Yep, okay. So if. Let me put back on this. If anyone has any other questions, please raise your hand. Comment from the board, please. Otherwise, with the criteria criteria being reviewed. I'd. Entertain motion to continue this hearing to a later date.
I'm in motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll call a vote.
Um, sorry, Woody, let's just figure out when you're when you're continuing it to.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
What what do you think's an acceptable date, Kristen? Two weeks from now?
Yeah, and I just wanna, just to clarify. Generally, the board has continued a public hearing for to include the process where. There's a draft decision before you, like actually the decision is written up and prepared ahead of time and at the meeting, the board reviews the decision and. And approves it. So that that can be done with the public hearing still open. And that's been the policy of this town to do it that way in case there are any comments or last questions that come up. So that would be the intention of continuing the hearing. So I think. The next. Regular scheduled meeting is November sixth. Which should be. Plenty of time. That's actually three weeks. There's an extra week in October this year, so. That I have no doubt would be sufficient to have a draft decision written in advance and. Considered for the board on that agenda. If that works for the board.
And you said that was the November sixth, correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right, so I'll start over again. I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing. To November sixth.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mary. Roll call vote, Scott.
I.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Steve, how do you feel?
I'm okay. I'm not voting, as you know.
Yes, I, okay, thank you. So we'll continue the statement to November sixth and we'll see you then, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, everyone have a good night.
And that will be on Zoom as well.
Yes, on Zoom, yes. Okay, next thing on the agenda. We have all business. Millennium Engineering, three Newbury Port Turnpike. Bavaro Realty, Family Realty. To LLC. And this was for the request for modifications to approve site plan. To add sidewalk and retaining wall. And a transformer pad. So. That being said. Is TJ here with us?
I am. Good evening, everyone. TJ Melvin with Millennium Engineering. So since we were last in front of the board, we got back in front of conservation. As Woody had mentioned earlier, they voted to issue an order of conditions. The, I believe we have received a clean letter from Joe Sawatka regarding his two comments that he had. In which we revised the plans and submitted them a week or two ago. I could pull them up and go over the the one minor change if the board would like, but essentially on the southern side of the building, we extended the walkway. What three or four feet just to. Get past one of the side egress doors and we provided a retaining wall detail. Both of which items I believe he's okay with. And we had submitted a full stormwater report and he provided, you know, no comments on that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have, or I can pull up the plans and go into more detail if you'd like.
Kristen, we had peer peer review on that, so that's. As TJ said, so. That's all said. If you'd like to actually put the plan up TJ and show us where the. Little extension was, we went through this last night conservation. So everyone's aware of. Minor change you made.
Can everyone see this, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so previously we had the this walk here, kind of stopping about where the mouse is, and we extended just a few more feet to get past. One of the egress doors in this location on the building. So that was a minor change since we were last in front of the barn, and again, we provided a construction detail for the retaining wall.
TJ, did you, with your stormwater reports, what you mentioned were. Shared with Joe, but. He didn't have any comments. Specific to that. Was there any, were there any significant changes? To the calculations?
No, very little. I couldn't. Really, the only change was. Previously, there was a little bit of the rain garden that was kind of in this area here. That's now filled in, obviously with the wall and walkway. So we recalculated the, you know, the extra impervious area and the very minimal loss to the rain garden. And the calculation showed that, you know, the base is still holds the hundred-year storm event. And we're meeting the master water standards for rate runoff. So really a minor change to the basin itself, but just to be completely, we provided that to the board.
Right, thanks.
So. That being said, with the planet, the plant board is satisfied with the peer review. And conservation is. Which was mentioned has. Started order of conditions. And close. Close that out, so. Does anyone have from the board have any questions on this matter?
No.
No questions at this time. All right. I would entertain a. Motion to approve the minor modifications to. Add a sidewalk, retaining wall, and transformer pad at three Newbury Port Turnpike. And also the little extension for the egress door.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mary. Roll call vote and welcome back, Pete. Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes, sir.
Scott?
I.
Mary?
Yes.
And I say yes as well, and Steve, how do you feel?
I'm good.
Okay, very good. So TJ, you should be all set with that. And thank you for your presentations and your time.
Great, thank you all for your time.
Have a good night. Okay. That's first thing's going on all business. The second thing on all business and Millennium Engineering again. Sixty Green Street subdivision owner properties. They have two requests here. Request a determination of project completion. And approval of record plan. And a request for release of performance funds for Farm Doolane. So Kristen, we have as built plan, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And the plan and engineer's certificate have been transmitted for a peer review and. So Joe has that is reviewing it and has requested a site walk, so. We've, we're in the process of setting that up.
Peer review sidewalk with Joe and yourself and.
And TJ or the applicant, whoever the applicant wants.
All right. TJ, would you like to say anything on this, on sixty?
Sure. Good evening, TJ Melvin with Millennium Engineering. As Woody had mentioned during his notes at the opening of the hearing, we were also in front of conservation for this project last night. We did receive a partial certificate of completion for lot two. The two outstanding items were, there was a small about five-foot strip. Kind of at the base of the slope that just needed some additional seating. And it was noticed that on the sidewalk, there was a kind of an old farm road that was kind of out past the limit of work and. And really not part of the construction area. And it was asked if, you know, to the to the abilities. That could, you know, just remove it by hand without really bringing in any machinery and just take out what can be taken out. On lot one, all of the work is complete. The one outstanding item was, it was noticed that the rip rap. With a constructive wetland that falls on lot one was not in place at the time of the sidewalk. So our intention is to get that in place and hopefully receive a full COC at the next conservation here. And as as has been discussed, we're in the process of setting up a time to to meet with Joe and Kristen on site to. To walk and just kind of go over some of the items that are. You know, still listed on the bond for one and two, just a final review and close up.
Okay, so there's a few things that need to be addressed and. Conservation's gonna weigh in in a few weeks on that and. Kristen and Joe and yourself are gonna meet for a sidewalk. So. We have a few things to wrap up here before we can. Close it out. So. Unless Kristen's got anything to say, I guess we shall continue this to our next meeting, Kristen?
Yeah, I think, well. That works. That should work. I got three weeks to get out there.
All right.
I don't, when's the next cons form meeting, TJ or Woody? Is that early?
I believe it's the sixth, Tuesday, the sixth of November. If it's not the sixth, it's the fifth. I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Yeah, I believe it's the day before. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. All right, so we'll. Get this TJ and Crane can get these things buttoned up and. We'll have. The conservation meeting and we'll see you on the seventh.
Great, thank you all for your time.
Yeah, we don't need to vote on this because it's still under all business, so. Thank you TJ for your time and we'll see you on the seventh.
Great, thank you all.
Yeah, have a good night. Okay. So that concludes all business on the agenda. The only thing, other thing I see on here. On the agenda tonight is a plan and directors report.
Yeah, let's, I'll go out and look at the moon. No, I have a few things. I won't, I won't take too long, though. We've received a a Form A application for an approval not required subdivision. At one thirty-one Newbury Port Turnpike. That's, as you may know, the self-storage property. The owner is intending to subdivide a two-acre. Parcel that has frontage on Boston Road, abutting. Abutting the other property that the board has permitted, which I believe was eighty-four Boston Road. I don't have that. Address in front of me. So that will be. On the next agenda. And shared with you all. There are a couple other inquiries. We're getting a lot of inquiries actually about accessory dwelling units, which I think was. Anticipated with the new legislation. So just inquiries about, you know, what can I do with my single-family property? People coming in to look at the maps and talk about that. As you. We have discussed previously, but the new accessory dwelling unit. Law will go into effect in February, so Newbury will be looking at revising our current bylaw. For spring town meeting, but but it will go into effect in February and those are. Accessory dwelling units approved by right through a process outside of the planning board. So that's. Great and interesting. Housing is a big need and a lot of people are are expressing questions about that. Let's see. We have a couple different things. There's the floodplain FEMA floodplain bylaw also. Needs to get updated. Is required to be updated for Newbury, so that will be coming onto the town meeting calendar. I'm thinking that it'll probably make sense for the planning board to have a workshop at some point in mid-November. If we want, we can talk about having an in-person workshop where we look specifically at all the zoning amendments that. Are being worked on in anticipation of town meeting. It really needs to start as early as it is, it has started now and need to get the planning board. Sort of discussing those amendments and thinking about what to move forward this year. And we may want to do that in a. More of a workshop format. Let's see. Let's see. I guess that's it. There's a border to Boston regional meeting coming up, um, where, which is the regional trail network, as you know, um. There's the mass DOT has, um. Currently has a contract with BSC engineers to be doing some survey work in the Byfield to Georgetown segment. So people may have seen some, uh, engineers out in this. Part of town, River Street, Forest Street, um, doing some survey work, and they are redelineating the wetlands as well. Um, so there's a regional, um, their quarterly meetings for that regional project, and that's coming up next week. Um, and finally, just excited to remind the board that our assistant planner is starting a week from Monday, so. At, at the next meeting, we'll, we'll bring Daniel along and, um. Uh, he will have, but, you know, a week and a half under him, but, so hopefully you'll all get to meet him in person as well.
That's great, Kristen. You need the help.
Yeah, very good.
It's great.
All right. I mean, if you have nothing else, Kristen, does anyone else from the board have anything to say? Comments, questions, Kristen, otherwise?
That's all I got tonight.
I see Pete looking around. Pete would.
It's a nice to make a motion. It's a nice slow moon, and I would love to make a motion that we adjourn at this point in time.
Okay, and I take Mary's laugh as a second?
Thanks, Woody.
Both in favor? Pete? Mary?
Yes, sir.
Scott?
I.
Steve? How do you feel?
Oh, yes.
As well. Thank you for a good meeting, and, uh, everyone have a great night. Go enjoy the moon.
Thanks, Woody.
Thanks, Kristen.
Kristen, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Ta-da.